Right for the Pledge of Allegiance.
You have to call them.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call a meeting to order.
Mr. Getchea?
Yeah.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Bajo? Mr. Richardson?
Yeah.
Mr. Norco? Mr. Hogan?
Yeah.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yeah.
Mr. Moran.
Mr. Getchea, has anyone signed up for public appearance?
Uh, no, Mr. Sir.
School Committee Communications, are there any school committee communications? I believe not. Report of the student rep.
Thank you, sir. The National Honor Society and National Tactical Honor Society proudly welcomed eighty-one new members during their annual induction ceremony on Thursday, November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Membership in National Honor Society, National Tactical Honor Society is highly selective, requiring candidates to hold a minimum of three point eight GPA and demonstrate meaningful community service, active involvement in their school and community, and exemplary character. The Environmental Club has been busy monitoring and observing their lettuce experiment, tracking growth, and documenting changes in the soil conditions. Members have also been working their bug farm, carefully sorting mealworms and beetles, and transferring them into a composting environment to support decomposition and nutrient cycling. Over the past month, Anime Club has spent time analyzing the emotion, symbolism, and storytelling that makes anime so unique. They also explode Kyoto animation style, noticing how subtle details bring characters and emotions to life. Students loved spotting the small gestures, comedic timing, and visual cues that make anime storytelling so layering and engaging. The freshman and sophomore planning committees conducted their annual butter braid fundraiser during October. The funds raised will be used to defer the cost of future events. Community members also created ornaments for the school tree to be displayed at the Chingsboro Festival of Trees, and will be taking a field trip to the festival in December to see their work on display. The Mod A United Nations team has been working diligently in preparation for the upcoming crisis conference being held at UMass Lowell on November twenty-first. Delegates have engaged in extensive research and composed speeches representing their assigned historical figures. They're also analyzing potential scenarios that may arise during the conference and collaborating with fellow members to develop strategic responses. The Junior Class Planning Committee is putting the final touches on their plans for prom, being held on Friday, December fifth, at Lenzies in Drakken. This year's theme is "Once Upon a Dream," promises to whisk away our class of two thousand and twenty-seven into a world where fairy tales come alive and memories last forever. Greater Lowell participated in District Attorney Marion Ryan's Empowering Conferences this past month. On November twenty-ninth, twenty students represented all grades attended the Empowering Citizens Conference, which includes topics ranging from engagement in civic life to building bridges across the American divide. On November thirteenth, another twenty students attended the Empowering Girls Conference. The conference featured powerful female speakers with a goal to motivate girls to have a positive influence on their peers and a positive impact on their communities. Skills USA officers and advisors will be headed to the Skills USA Mass Fall State Leadership Conference, being held from November twenty-third to the twenty-fourth in Marlborough, Mass. At this two-day overnight event, over five hundred chapter officers from high schools all over Massachusetts will learn firsthand about teamwork, professionalism, and personal standards of excellence. Our student officers will also be taking their Skills USA leader exam and participating in team leadership competitions to prepare them to facilitate events on the local level. The Music Club has a lot happening this month. Their a cappella group, Dissonant Escape, has been chosen to compete in the two thousand and twenty-six International Championship of High School Acappella Competitions on January twenty-fifth. They will be competing against nine other teams in the regional quarterfinals with the hopes of qualifying for the semifinals in March. In addition, the Music Club is working on filming our annual holiday show. This year's holiday show will once again feature a Saturday Night Live vibe and will be livestreamed through YouTube on Tuesday, December twenty-third, the last school day before vacation. In sports news, Unified Basketball had another amazing season with all of the athletes giving their best. We look forward to many more such successes. The Varsity Dance Team took home a second-place finish on November second at the Endicott Invitational at Endicott College. The dancers will move on to MSSAA states on November twenty-third. The team also performed all season long at our varsity football games. Field hockey continued to grow as they embarked on year five of the program. The team fielded a solid group of players that competed hard in every contest, with the Griffins compiling their best overall record in the program's short history. The Boys and Girls Soccer Teams have tremendous successes this fall. The Boys' team captured the CAC League Title and both qualified for the MIA Division III State and MVADA Vocational Tournaments. Golf had arguably their best season in the program's eight-year history. The team secured the most match wins in program history and followed that up with solid finishes at both the CAC and state vocational tournament matches. The team also qualified for their second consecutive MIA Tournament appearance. Girls volleyball had a successful season as the team netted eleven wins on the year and qualified for the MIA Division III State Tournament. The cheer team did a tremendous job this season, placing first at the MVADA State Vocational Competition on October twenty-sixth, followed up with another first-place finish at the CAC League Competition on November eighth. The team will not set their eyes on competing at the MSSAA State Competitions later in November. Football currently sits with a season record of four to five, which includes wins over Bristol Plymouth, Fitchburg, Brookline, and Boston Latin Academy. The team will look forward to defend the Mill City Cup at their annual Thanksgiving Eve clash with Lowell Catholic on November twenty-sixth. Cross-country ran a historical campaign this fall. Both the girls' and boys' teams captured the CAC Regular Season Title, the CAC League Meat Championship, and the State Vocational Meat Championship. To top that all off, both the girls' and boys' teams captured the first-ever MIA State Meat Championships in the program's history. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Great job.
I just want to add something to that news that is came up just the other day, that our very own Coach Mack, Dave McLaughlin, is the Mass Baseball Coach, was inaugurated, is going to be inaugurated, into the two thousand and twenty-five Mass Baseball Coaching Hall of Fame.
Well deserved.
Congratulations.
Coach Mack's the best.
Coach Mack.
They don't come any better.
Absolutely, agreed.
Just wanted to add that to the news.
Yes, thank you very much. Motion approved the minutes from October twentieth.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Getchea?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Moran.
Report of the treasurer, motion to waive the reading of the warrant.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Getchea.
Mr. Getchea?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Bajo? Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes. Motion to approve the expenditures of six million, three hundred and eighty-three, eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents. Second.
Mr. Getchea?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes. Report of general counsel, not tonight. I'll turn it over to the Adam Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item on my agenda, I would like to proudly invite math instructor, Ms. Robin Tillam, along with our WBLA Design Challenge winners from Team Mode MK, who are here tonight to present their winning project. And I'll call them, and they can push their chair up forward to, to present their winning project. First, Marcus Fechner, he is a senior from the engineer, in our engineering program. Next, Oliver McCarthy, he is a junior in engineering. Aiden Simmons, a senior in engineering. Christian Carlton, a junior in electrical, and Maya Zabkowski, a junior in electrical. So they're here to present our project tonight, so we are going to step back, and I'll ask Mr. Versalone if he could dim the lights a little bit. And we'll begin whenever you're ready, Marcus, or whoever's beginning.
All right, I'll go ahead and play the video.
Sure. You want to introduce the video for us?
Oh, sorry about that, yes. I didn't, I wasn't sure how to control this. So this was a project about urban farming, basically in the Lowell area. What we had to do, we had to design a sustainable farm that we could run on solar panels and aquaponics in order to feed our community. So, sorry?
Year-round.
Yeah, year-round, to make sure it's sustainable for even more years to come. We had to go over many different factors, such as what plants to use, the animals, which would be fish, we had chickens as well, composting, and we had to have a lot of data to support this as well. We had financial data, which was Danny, who unfortunately cannot be here. Then we had Oliver.
Oh, you want me to?
Yeah, Oliver.
I was the one that made the CAD design, that's the layout for our farm, there's a poster over there. And that's just the basis of, if we were to actually build this, what it would kind of look like, or just like a base plan. And like, it'll, the video will get more into it.
Then we had Aiden Simmons.
I was the head of communications, I made sure we had a marketing strategy, like, that we made sure we had community outreach sort of programs that would sort of reach out to our community and make them, make them know that this was an available source of food, if it was a real thing.
We had Maya Zabkowski.
So I designed our CSA plan, which is our community-supported agriculture plan, to ensure we have a actual profitable running farm set up. And I also designed our aquaponic system, as well as did research for the plants and animals we used.
Less but not least, we have Christian Carlton.
I was the team support, I did everything that I was needed to help with, but my two main contributions were the power calculations for our solar panels and generators, and helping with the budgeting, who our finance manager unfortunately could not be here today.
And hi, I'm Robin Tillam. We were approached by WBLA to be invited as part of this challenge. We, this is our third year in a row working with WBLA. So far seventeen students have completed a virtual internship through WBLA. Six students completed a CAD design thinking project, three students completed a cybersecurity project, and we have eight students signed up for the January Clean Energy Internship. I think this would be a great opportunity, and I'm very proud of our team here.
All right, I'll go ahead and start the video.
I'm Marcus Fechner, the team lead.
I'm Oliver McCarthy, our lead designer.
I'm Aiden Simmons, head of communications.
I'm Danny Un, I'm the finance manager.
My name is Maya Zabkowski, I am the community impact coordinator.
My name is Christian Carlton, I'm the team support.
So the overview is, if, we will be talking about our general infrastructure, our CSA plan, finance, and community outreach. What exactly is our problem? According to Lowell Food Consensus from two thousand and twenty-two, the biggest problem is food affordability and the accessibility of nutrition.
Reporting in progress.
According to Master General Brigham, studies show that the food insecurity rate has risen thirty-seven percent in two thousand and twenty-four and will continue to go up due to the rise in prices of food.
This first graph is common food barriers for those in mass and in Lowell. The biggest problem is affordability, we need more money, and the other factors all have to do with accessibility. Then this next graph shows determining values, or the values of food, with the biggest being affordability and the rest having to do with convenience, as in nearby, fresh, local.
Our solution: affordable food, accessibility, and nutrition are hard to obtain, especially for the citizens that are struggling to get by in Lowell. Therefore, we have founded an urban farm dedicated to solving these problems. An urban, an urban aquaculture farm for Lowell, which is six thousand square feet, sustainable. We are affordable, accessible, and nutritious, with a flexible CSA model, lower costs. We are accessible with a central pickup location at Lowell and Forty-Five Monster Street, located directly in the community. And we are nutritious with fresh locurates, fish, and organic vegetables.
Our urban farm layout. So when you first walk into our urban farm, there'll be a pickup station slash stand. And then as you continue onward, there are twelve vertical farms. And as you continue on after that, it's a shed with six solar panels on the roof, and the shed stores our materials and an incubator for the chicks of our chicken coop, which is next. And then after that is our greenhouse with an aquaponics system, which an aquaponic system is a fish clean, fish that clean water by being natural filters, and their waste helping our plants grow better. And our greenhouse has a design for a slanted roof for the best exposure to sunlight. And then onward is compost for our soil to be richer and to keep food waste out of landfills. And then there are eight more vertical farms for more food. And all around all of the vertical farms are raspberry bushes and peppermint bushes, raspberry for runoff water, which is bad for the environment, and peppermint for deteriorating weeds. Our vertical farms, we have two different kinds. The one on the top is for our beets, radishes, and baby carrots, and the one on the bottom is for potatoes, since they need to be deeper. The vertical farms are farms that are stacked on top of each other to save space, and we have twenty of these in total, five for each plant. The plants and animals on site, so this is our list of all our plants and our animals. So aquaponics plants are plants that are more sensitive, so they'll be kept inside and be more temperature-controlled and looked after. The vertical farms will have plants that are more hardy and can deal with temperatures. The perimeter plants, as I explained earlier, are for purposes. And we have live animals, we have channel catfish, koi fish, which are natural filters, and Austria chickens, which produce more eggs than normal chickens.
Our power calculations, due to everything from our heaters, lights, and ventilation, adds up to about three point two kilowatt-hours, that's assuming you're running something that runs on kilowatts for an hour. Wires will be ran through Romex and conduit, which is good for underground runs, LFMC for hybrid type flexible metal by conduit. For the day, we will rely on our panel panels, while at night we will rely on our generators.
This is our aquaponic setup. We will have four two-thousand gallon tanks, including one of which being a dedicated nursery tank. Our plants will be positioned on metal rods and in grown, grow containers above the tanks, with a consistent water supply being brought up from our fish tank through a water pump system, which will then rain the water down onto the pit to simulate real life rain. And as the water moves through the tanks and through our substrate, the water will just back down into the fish tank, which will also act as aerating the water to bring more natural feeling to the tank for our fish. Our fail-safe aquaponic system will also include a solid waste filter as well as a biofilter to ensure that there is no potential for harm to our plants or animals. Each tank, we will have between six, eight koi fish and a hundred and fifty, even catfish. We keep the koi fish in there to act as a natural filter because they mostly eat algae. In our community-supported agriculture plan, or CSA plan, we choose to have two options, a monthly and bi-annual plan. We also hope to accept food stamps as well as hip, which is not commonly done in Lowell. All of our pickup will be on-site, and we are change-focused, so we plan to adjust and adapt to our community's needs, especially over the first five years. We split our production into one hundred pieces, or which I keep calling shares, to be given out through our membership. So our bi-annual share, there's a start of fifty membership spaces for bi-annual shares. The price will vary from season to season, who have potential changes in crops, but our summer price is around seven hundred dollars, and our winter payment is about three hundred fifty dollars. This will provide seasonal vegetables and catfish, and there's an optional upgrade for eggs as well, with a constant additional year round price of a hundred dollars. There's only twenty-five bi-annual egg upgrades available to our customers. Then for our monthly share, we will have our monthly options be a hundred and twenty-five dollars, be for year-round pickup. They will pick up once a month, and they'll be given what a typical bi-annual member will be given, without a direct payment or, uh, direct large payment or commitment. This will also have the vegetables and catfish, but there's also an optional upgrade of the eggs for twenty-five dollars per purchase, and there's twenty-five monthly egg supplies available. Our remaining fifty egg shares will be sold directly at our farm stand to our community. This will not only improve freshness and availability, it will maximize the benefits of our eggs, and we choose to sell these around two dollars per dozen. Our main pickup location for our members will also be these farm stands, and we plan to accept our membership payments there, as well as over the phone, as, um, to improve availability for our customers.
We are a nonprofit urban aquaponics farm, we are self-sustaining and community-centered. Our total estimated budget was a hundred thousand dollars. We have managed to come to this, but, come to below budget, spending about fifty-two thousand dollars, with the infrastructure and housing being our highest cost at thirty-seven thousand dollars, with a contingency of ten thousand dollars. With the remaining budget of thirty-six thousand, we will save that for hu- future maintenance. Our annual operating cost for our staff is around forty-seven thousand dollars to sixty-two thousand dollars. Our yearly income for our CSA plants is sixty-two thousand dollars at our lowest, and eighty-seven thousand dollars at our highest.
Our community impact is to improve nutrition, a, along with providing constant sources of vitamins and overall improving community health. Our potential partnerships will be with Lowell Public Schools and local small businesses. For Lowell Public Schools, we will be able to provide lower income families with better nutrition, along with teaching younger kids nutrition. And with small businesses, we'll be able to help out restaurants with improving public health over getting the word out of violent mouth. Statistics, we plan to feed over seventy-five families monthly by the end of the five years. Here is our community flyer. This flyer showcases what our farm is all about, including but not limited to our state-of-the-art aquaponics, our greenhouse and our wonderful CSA operation. It also includes our contact location, our contacts and our location. Thank you. This is the end of our slides. We are Mode MK. Does anybody have any questions? So we are Mode MK.
So I'm actually gonna stop right there. Uh, does anybody here have any questions about this?
So just the man in the corner was actually one of the judges in the competition. This was actually the live competition uh on the day of the challenge. This was their actual presentation. Go ahead, Marcus.
Yeah, does anybody have any questions about our project? This was uh just our, this was our actual propos- proposal, which gave us a real opportunity to see what the industry was like.
When are you gonna stop building it?
Uh, that may. Maybe I'll suggest it on my co-op soon.
Well done, guys.
So do you wanna talk about some of your community partners that hope to support you through this challenge?
Oh, yes. We work with a ton of industry professionals, including um people from Mill City Grows, multiple um engineering firms and many, many more. We worked, and as well as teachers in our school, we had teachers who came in and helped with fields that they were experienced in. Um, we did a lot of researching and a lot of learning and it was extremely, extremely helpful to have this many people be able to help us out.
So I wanna just shout out uh Philomena Mayberry, who uh was from A S C E, who was a big support. Her team was a big support in coaching our, our students during this challenge.
Cool, definitely.
And um I guess someone wants to put in a motion for it, but where, where would you hope to put it? Here at the school?
I'm sorry?
Are you hoping to put it right here at the school?
Um, that is unlikely, but if we, if we were to get the opportunity, I think that maybe some things could be done alongside, say, uh masonry, electrical, many other, even enge- our own engineering and CAD shops here that would probably love to benefit to this becoming a reality.
Cool. And, and how large would it be? I see a hundred.
Well, this was going to be uh six thousand square feet. So this was, I initially planned to be an empty lot somewhere downtown or downtown Lowell. Uh, so six thousand square feet would be the, the space that we were given. But if you need to make adjustments, say, for our school area to make it to scale, I think that, that could be a possibility.
Outstanding.
Thank you.
It's very exciting. Hopefully it uh comes to fruition for us.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we're very proud of these students.
Very proud.
Great, great challenge.
Good job, everybody.
And, and some of them are not in the same program, so did you all know each other prior to the challenge?
Um, so I knew Aiden through a club, Oliver as a friend, and then Christian was in my shop. I did not know Marcus prior or Danny.
So they, they were sort of, they're just thrown together to uh work together and I think they did an incredible job and made some friendships out of this.
I personally only knew uh Aiden and Danny, but I grew to know Oliver, who's also in engineering alongside uh Aiden and Danny. And then Maya and Christian are both in my AP physics class. So I didn't, I didn't know them that well, but we definitely got closer because of this.
That's great.
So not to toot my own horn or anything, but I feel like
Go ahead, Marcus.
As my role of team lead, I think that I did a good job being able to pull everything together. You know, we got everybody going along well and it was fortunate that we all had some side of, uh, sort of connection to each other.
That's great. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
You should be very proud of your colleagues. Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, guys. Great job.
Yeah, great job. So the next item on my agenda, I'd like to inform the committee that uh Mass Higher Lowell Career Center has been awarded a Youth Works Grant, setting aside forty thousand dollars to partner with Greater Lowell Technical High School to run an adult certified nursing assistant or C N A program after school for up to twenty adults. Next, I'm happy to inform the committee that Greater Lowell Tech has been awarded a MIFA Pathways Grant from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in the amount of seven thousand dollars to develop curriculum and resources that will support students in completing their pathway portfolios, which is going to be a new requirement by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. The next item on my agenda is the Cooperative Education Report. The report uh that you have in your packet indicates a hundred and seventy-nine uh senior students participating in cooperative education. But I'm always happy to report uh the most recent data, which is that there are currently two hundred and ten senior students participating in co-op, which is thirty-nine percent of the class of twenty twenty-six. And a copy of the Cooperative Education Report is in your packets too. So the next item on my agenda is I'm going to be inviting uh our assistant superintendent and principal, Mr. Barton, and our leadership uh team members up uh to talk about this year's MCAS and accountability report. Uh, however, uh, you know, I'd just like to say a cou- a couple of very important things about Mr. Barton and uh this entire administrative team. Uh, you know, I'm happy to report, and you'll hear more about that, from the team, that this year's accountability rating is at the sixty-fourth, is at the sixty-fourth percentile, the highest rating in our school's history. Uh, and I thought it would be important that members of our leadership team are here uh to thank them for their hard work, their dedication and professionalism under the guidance of our assistant superintendent and principal, Mr. Barton, our administrative team and every member of our staff. It, you know, their leadership, uh, their commitment to our students and the belief in working together through difficult times uh have truly paid off and have really made a difference in the lives of students that we serve. And you will, you will hear that and it is going to be reflected in the presentation that they have uh put together uh to put, to, to ex- uh present to you tonight. So I wanted to, to personally thank them all uh for their incredible job and their commitment uh to the students of this school and to the entire school community. It takes a village, uh, and I'm proud uh to, to work alongside of them and to have them as part of our leadership team. So with that said, uh, I, I just wanna introduce, I think it would be important to introduce everybody too, cause sometimes uh. So I guess I'm gonna start over here with Jennifer Santiago. Jennifer Santiago is an assistant uh principal in our main office. Tracy Encarnaccio, the director of uh school counseling. Mr. Ron Versalone, dean of students. Ariana Arf- Arfanakis, our director of math and, uh, I'm sorry, our uh chairperson of math and science. Uh, Kate Palladino, our director of English Language Education and Reading. Gregory Haas, who's right here in front of us, our director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. Nicholas Bochamp, our uh assistant principal. Paul Mayette, our chairperson for math, no, sorry, I'm sorry, English and Social Studies. Mr. Jamie Costa, our senior assistant principal. And Mrs. Alahim- Allison Rahani, our uh director of Special Education. Did I get everybody on this? So thank you all. Uh, it takes a village and this team has done some incredible work over the last two years to uh move our school forward and I really believe we're, we're in an upward trajectory and it's, it's thanks to all of them working together, along with our entire uh en- entire staff, so.
I've always used the adage, uh, there's no I in team. And I think this is a, a great team that I've viewed for more than several years here. I hope no one's leaving too soon. Uh, but I'm very happy at the, the work you perform and produce and I thank you very much.
So with that said, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Haas to uh begin the presentation, or Mr. Bu- Mr. Barton, I'm sorry.
No, I think uh Superintendent Davis, you set the stage admirably and I don't think I can add anything that you already said, so I'm gonna turn it over.
So thank you.
Um, one, just quick moment before I jump into the MCAS results and accountability. Um, I just really wanted to give a ton of credit to Robin Tillum as the teacher coordinator and also Dr. Arfanakis um working on the STEM Week Design Challenge. Um, I, I know the students were very proud of their work and I think um not as bold as they should have, but they did actually win for the state. So in all of the competitions across the entire state, that team is the, the winner for the state. So again, I think a huge compliment to um Robin and Ariana and, and our students.
And just so you know as well, they only had from Monday until Friday morning to put this entire thing together, including that presentation.
And some of them didn't know each other before that.
Exactly.
That's intense.
Yes.
And not only was it a true collaborative effort with our students, um, Superintendent David said, Davis said, we did have a ton of other support. We had our marketing teachers, uh, Mike Knight went down and did a lesson on budgeting and how you run um successful budgets. We had several representatives from A C E C, um, one of our partners, our industry partners in the engineering field. So it really was a great effort and kudos to all their hard work. Um, with that, we'll jump into the twenty twenty-five MCAS results and the accountability overview. Um, I'll pause at a couple of different intervals just to see if there's questions as we go through. In general, I'm sure as it was um well-publicized on the news, this um tail end of the spring into the summer, across the entire state, there was a decline in MCAS performance, mainly with high schoolers knowing that it wasn't part of the graduation requirements anymore. That said, um, I think we can be very proud at Greater Lowell Tech that within all three subject areas, we did not see that kind of drastic shift that, that was seen across the entire state level. And in fact, some of the programs actually saw um improvements from last year, specifically mathematics. So looking at English as a whole, we are still um slightly below the state. And again, sim- similar to the other years, I'm gonna be focusing on the combined percentage of meeting and exceeding expectations, which is what the department views as kind of acceptable performance. Um, so in English Language Arts, we did see a little bit of a dip um from where we were last year again, but still nowhere near as um drastic as the state level. And we're closing in on um that metric where the state was at. So currently we're only three percent um different from the state. In mathematics, we saw again a, a little bit of a shift, but um we are now above the state in terms of our students and their um math performance and meeting and exceeding expectations, and that would be a first time for us. And then in science, again, um minimal changes, but we are in much better place um from where we were previously, although um we are now kind of seeing where things are normalizing from when we went from biology being a two-year course into a one-year course and kind of the data. Um, now it's not a year delayed, it's starting to balance out a little bit. Um, any question just in terms of the overall student MCAS achievement? The other piece that, once we get to accountability, that's equally important is growth. Um, so in terms of our student achievement, really we get the students that we get and we try to move them as far towards exceeding expectations as possible. But what we have control over is the student's growth. So it's looking at their MCAS scores in eighth grade to where they were in tenth grade, which is really a reflection of our efforts here. Um, and you can see in both instances, the yellow line is us. We always wanna be higher than the blue. So um we had a little bit of a dip in growth in English last year, but we're back above the state average um for the third year since the pandemic has ended. And we are continuing on the um right trajectory that we've been on in math, where we continue to go above and above and above. So that's um a really positive sign of that what we've been doing is, is yielding the results. And um I think between Paul and Ariana and the rest of the team that works on um supporting student academic performance, um that we're well situated to see that growth and achievement improve even over the next couple of years. Um, the next group of slides is looking into specific student groups, um ones that the department typically looks at, and then also ones that are um more impactful in terms of the overall accountability rating. So the first being our English learners. Um, in English Language Arts, we match the state in terms of the number of students meeting and exceeding expectations. But then in mathematics, as well as biology, we're, we're above the state average. Um, we have seen some dip again from prior years, now that MCAS isn't as um critical of a, of a component for students, not tied to graduation. Um, but again, I think it's a testament to Kate Palladino, our E L team, um really keeping the English learners engaged in their academic work. Obviously, the academic co-teachers that we have and the additional supports that we have in place for those students. Kind of a similar um conversation with our students with disabilities. We saw a little bit of a dip um from previous years, but definitely not anything near compared to what the state average was. Um, we in fact actually have seen, um even with some of the shifting in terms of state performance and our performance, that the gap or the um kind of difference between the overall state performance for students with disabilities and our performance is closing, which is exactly what we want. Um, so again, it's Allison Rahani and our special ed teachers, as well as the content teachers working with those students, really figuring out what they need to um be the most prepared for MCAS and really kind of connect the academic content to other things that are important to them, like their career in technical education. Uh, our low-income student group, um, we actually are performing very, very well compared to the state. In English, we're twelve percent above the state, mathematics fifteen percent, and in science and technology, ten percent. Again, this is one of the metrics that the state looks at in terms of funding, as well as in terms of how the school's performance is overall. We do have a high-low income percentage of students. Um, so it's a really, really good thing for our accountability and our overall performance that they are performing as well. The next group I'm going to review briefly is um our Asian student group. And the reason that this slide kind of pops up every couple of years is because of their performance as a student group compared to their peers across the state. Um, years prior, we've been kind of at watch or required assistance because of their performance. Um, when we get into accountability, you'll see that we're not kind of there yet. But um this is a group that we do have an opportunity to um work to improve. They are still below the state in English, math and science, but we did see massive gains this year in that student group. There was a seven percent increase in meeting and exceeding in English Language Arts and an eight percent increase in mathematics. So absolutely moving that group um in the right direction. And the last student group that I'm going to be kind of highlighting tonight is our Hispanic student group. Uh, again, this is one that across the state, they're kind of keeping an eye on, just it's not as historically a highest, or a higher performing group compared to others. So it's something that I think when we see that our average in English is nine percent above, math is thirteen percent above, and in science or biology specifically, it's fifteen percent above the state average, that um it really underscores the welcoming community that Greater Lowell Tech is. Um, how regardless of the student's background or their race or ethnicity, they get the same supports and um resources and strategies that they need to be successful. Are there any questions just in terms of the hard data for MCAS performance? All right, next couple of slides are just really highlighting um English Language Arts and then we'll go into math and science. But I'm gonna kind of turn it over to Paul Mayette if he wants to speak anything. Obviously, we won't read all the slides. You had them in your packet, but just highlights of the last year.
Uh, I, I mean, the biggest highlight to me is the, is those individual student breakout groups that Greg was just talking about. Um, this particular low, the, excuse me, the low income and Hispanic groups. We've got the, that little bit of ground we need to make up with the state. So I think the, the biggest piece to draw your attention to now is at the bottom. Continuing to focus on professional development, reading and writing, looking at ways that A I can not just be used to cheat, but actually enhance writing. Um, there, there are a number of opportunities there that, that teachers are coming up with and bringing to us and, and I'd really like to see that going on. Uh, we've reworked our tutoring program this year to assign tutors to specific grade levels so that they're familiar with the content, able to pull students out. Um, and as, this is our, what, second full year now with Star Data?
Yep.
So obviously using that data that we can develop ourselves, um, it's tests very similar to MCAS where we get individual student performances and we can target what those students need. You can break it down by student need, by class need, so that we can start to put the, the necessary supports in place well before we're looking at MCAS data now. So the longer we're with that program, I think the better that we'll see the results of that showing up in classes.
Um, as much as I, oh, sorry.
Would that be one of the metrics you use to see a math climb pretty nicely?
I would say internally, um, I know, uh, Ariana will probably speak on, on her end, some of the different assessments she uses, but we do implement several. she uses, but we do implement several benchmarking assessments throughout the year. So before we get to MCAS, which is kind of that, as far as accountability goes, that make it or break it, we've run several assessments in advance of that so that we can see if there's any areas of deficit or where we can push student learning from like meeting expectations over to exceeding expectations. And both the cluster chair people did a great job in terms of really digging into that data and then working with teachers directly to translate that into classroom instruction.
So it goes down to the classroom level.
And identifies individual skills for each student in that classroom that they can work on to improve.
One final piece with English Language Arts, and as much as I don't want to be talking about pre-COVID life anymore or COVID in general, you'll see that will pop up again when we get to the accountability. So in terms of English Language Arts, one incredible highlight though is that prior to COVID, so the 2019 MCAS administration, there was a 28% difference in meeting and exceeding for Greater Lowell compared to the state, and we have narrowed that down to 3%. So that really is incredible, coming out of a pandemic, managing student attendance issues across the entire state, but then to see these gains here is really a testament to everybody internally. Mathematics?
So I am very proud to be able to deliver some great news about our math performance. When we compare our performance against the state performance in almost every key area, we really have exceeded and had our best performance that we've had, looking at all the past years from 2019 to present. So for example, in our meeting and exceeding category, we are 30%, 31% higher, and the state in comparison is 24% lower in 2019. So that's a huge improvement right there. When we look, the exam is broken up into four categories. So in all four categories, we have improved against the state performance. So algebra and geometry are the biggest two categories, and we are scoring higher than the state in algebra, which was our lowest scoring one last year compared to the state. We were 7% below the state last year. And now in 2025, our results, we are actually higher than the state average. So even our lowest performing category, we've significantly brought up. Geometry continues to be our highest performing category, 4% higher than the state in 2024, and now we're 7% higher. So that's good news, yes.
Is there anything that you would attribute the boost, so to speak?
Oh, I'm glad you asked that question. Definitely. So a few different things. One thing is that we are actually having our chemistry now in the 10th grade year, and chemistry is a little bit more algebra-based. So that actually lines up nicely because most of our freshmen, they're either doing Algebra I or Algebra I and II. And then sophomore year, they've already developed those algebra skills, they'll repeat some of them when they're in geometry, but they're also remembering and applying them in chemistry. So that cross-curricular work right there. Yes, exactly. It's helped show some enormous growth. We've also, this year, we're also putting in and we've restructured some of our support classes. So we're going to have more support for students now that we're able to identify them with STAR testing and other means in the ninth and 10th grades. That way, we're not waiting until junior year or senior year. If students have some gaps in math, we can really tackle it head-on. So there's been a lot of work in the math department. We had final exams that all students had, even in ninth and 10th grade. Those final exams were another great example of, we could take a look at the individual kids who needed a little bit more help and make sure that they were getting that. So it really prepared them for both the state assessment and what they were doing in their classes, in chemistry, in the future classes, and I'm sure it carries over into their shop performance as well.
Very enlightening, very enlightening, thank you.
And our subgroups, as you can see too, we're 48% higher for low-income students compared to the state, 57% for Hispanic students, and 80% higher than the state for English language learners. The last key thing I really want to mention is our, the growth, our student growth percentile. We are 61%. That's the highest we've been. Looking back from 2019, we were below the state. We are 61% now. When we compare our, so the student growth, that's saying every kid kind of comes to us with a mark of how well we think they're going to do, right? Based on their past performance, how well do we think they're going to do? Our kids did so much better than we thought they would be able to do, than anyone did. There's 61% for the student growth percentile. Compared to our sending district schools and compared to the other tech schools in the state, there is only one school that scored one percentage point higher than us. We scored a tie with Groton Dunstable when it comes to our student percentile, growth percentile, and then we are higher than all of the other schools.
Well done.
Any questions?
We might ask for a recount.
And this is another example where in 2019, the gap between our performance and the state was at 23%, and for this past year, it's only 1%. The difference is we are above the state average this time. So massive shifts from being well below to moving in the absolute right direction. With that, we'll move over to our last content area before we move into the accountability, which will be biology.
So for our biology performance, we were 30%, 31% higher than in 2019 when it comes to the meeting and exceeding expectations. So as Mr. Haas mentioned, you know, we don't want to keep talking about it, but everyone uses this as a comparison. How have we managed to bring the kids back from what happened during COVID, from that type of a learning experience that they had there? And we've not only brought it back, but we've exceeded what we were doing before. So you can see in all of the categories with biology, we are higher, 5% in ecology for our lowest. And so we're outperforming the state average in our, in our school. Low-income students outperformed their peers at the state level by 34%. Hispanic students outperformed it by 65%. One of the changes that I implemented last year was actually how we did our review program for biology. So instead of having students stay after school each day for an hour over multiple weeks, we actually had two boot camps on Saturdays. They were intense boot camps, but it really had some success with the students. We saw, yes. Did you enjoy it?
Killed that task.
Yes, yes. So we actually had 73 students attend on our first Saturday, and we had 54 students attend on our second Saturday. So if you want to compare the years, we had about 64 students per hour of instruction with this new format compared to just four students per hour of instruction with the past format. So that was, happy to say, a success. We've also increased labs and hands-on learning. That's been a big priority for me, and it's just one way of seeing kids get more engaged and be able to apply what they're learning.
And on the Saturday boot camps, were they asked to come or were they sort of told?
Oh, no, they, so we put it out there. Anyone who would like to join us to have this nice review did so. So they volunteered to come on their two Saturdays. And there were a couple drives to that. We also had a final exam in biology, which we hadn't had before. So that was one incentive for them to kind of come on a Saturday and further their knowledge. That final exam was timed nicely right prior to MCAS. So they were able, we were able to use that final exam to show kids, hey, maybe this is something that you didn't understand, we could go through the questions with them, and they could see that before taking the MCAS exam.
And, excuse me, and they satisfied their own rides, correct? We didn't supply transportation?
Oh, we did not. They came themselves, but also the public transportation system is free, so anyone who needed to could come that way.
I can't, can't believe the number of parents that took advantage of the...
Yes. Actually, I had requests for it to also be offered in math this year too. So it seemed like they were very eager to have something like that.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty good.
Any additional questions related to MCAS? All right, hearing that, we'll move over to accountability.
I mean, I'll make a comment. I mean, this is great news. I've been here for 14 years or so, and math scores were always a struggle. To see where we were against the baseline in the state, we were always looking at the bottom tier. And to see this growth, to see us above the state, to see the low-income, to see the Hispanic, to see this, to see this tremendous growth with the most at-risk that we have is something that is by far the most exciting thing. And I can see the excitement on all of your faces, and congratulations to all of you.
It's pride.
But you know, congratulations to the students as well. This is, this is by far better than anything that I ever could have expected. The accountability is going to be more of the same. I've looked at it, but great work.
Well, let us share the story.
How do we get the teachers?
Let them live their moments.
So I am thrilled to say our teachers are very invested in our students here.
It shows.
We, I can tell you, the second these scores come, even before the scores come out, everyone is very eager and awaiting them, and the state made us wait a little longer this year, and it was a little nail-biting for us. And that's just a sign of how passionate our teachers are. And we tried to make this as much of a fun experience as we possibly could for the students. We had pizzas and salads and the calf, and we really tried to make it something that it was more of a sense of community, as we're all trying to be here to try and get through learning this material. But I just, I am so proud of all the teachers I've been able to work with here, and just seeing how much they care about the students really has this impact.
You all should be proud. It's pretty impressive.
They've already put it in their calendar, even a year ahead of time.
I'm astonished, the number of parents that took advantage of, sent their child here. And they must, they must have thought something too. But the impact is great. I, that's not only great news for you people.
Great news for kids.
I don't have to speak for myself, the board feels real good about it.
You have a student right here.
When MCAS first come out, there were some administrations that didn't really embrace it. You people have clearly embraced it and polished it, and those charts were unbelievable. You really...
Well, I think it's a testament to our mission. I think it's a testament to our mission of what we say we prepare kids for. It's, it's preparing students for college, career, and citizenship in the future, and we are two educations in one. Despite what, despite what's out there, we, we have a mission, and I think we uphold to our mission well.
They identified the problem and solved it.
So in terms of accountability, this slide just briefly goes over again what's in accountability. So the achievement in student growth is primarily related to the ninth and 10th grade performance in academics, but there is so much more that goes into the successes of Greater Lowell, our high school completion. Again, it's a lot of work, our school counselors, our teachers, our coaches, the main office team, getting kids in the building, keeping them in the building through graduation, our English language proficiency, so how students are doing growing their English skills is measured by access, so Kate Palladino and her team. Chronic absenteeism, again, working the main office, but really everyone. Superintendent talks about the power of presence, and when we're here and our students are here, that's how we're seeing the gains that we are.
Just to add to those percentages while we're here, our attendance rate is, was 95.8%, graduation rate 97.5%, and dropout rate 0.1% for all grades.
So this slide does, it shows the student attendance rate. It's our attendance compared to the state. So again, the main office does incredible work keeping the students motivated and in-house. Our students are here for the teachers, for their coaches, for their academic and their technical work. So you can see that, you know, prior to the pandemic, we were above the state still, but right around 2020, 2021, there was a little bit of fluctuation. But since we came back fully in person, our students are here and consistently are here.
I thought it would be important to have them here tonight if they want to make any comments about attendance, their focus on attendance, creating a welcoming, accepting, supportive environment. We celebrate students' attendance during our class meetings. We celebrate students' homeroom attendance with celebration. And every time we reach that 95%, we celebrate during lunch with some ice cream. And it used to be a DJ, but now I think it's just ice cream. But, and also the work of our attendance monitor, retired Mr. Timmy Fallon, who does a great job working with our main office to, to re-engage students back in school, as well as with our school counseling department, Tracy and her counselors, everybody working together to ensure that students get the high-quality education and come to school and learn. So I appreciate our assistant principals and our main office staff, our dean who are here with us this evening, because that is a huge part of, of our school community. Students have to be here to, to learn. So thank you for all that you do every day.
So it's another night. I've been doing this for like four years, and every time I leave these meetings, I'm never disappointed. This is another one of those nights.
I mean, I think this is a real celebration of the administrative team, the school staff, and what we really have been working on for, for the last several years on building the school community. And it really shows that it is a community and what working together can achieve for students. So, thank you.
Well done.
Well, we're not, it's not over yet.
So in addition to our daily attendance rate, which is definitely something we are interested in keeping above that 95% threshold, chronic absenteeism is part of the accountability process. So that is the count of students, the percentage of students that are out 10% or more, so 18 days out of the 180 school day. Ideally, we want them all here as often as possible, but again, in this graph, you can see that our chronic absenteeism is significantly better than the state, and it's only improving year over year. And that's just, again, as Superintendent Davis said, just a testament of everyone's hard work.
And students wanting to be here to learn. They came on Saturday.
Well, what a change realistically from 2022 to 2025, right? Your chronic absentee rate was 22, 21% in 2022 and 7.5% in 2025. That speaks volumes in itself.
Yeah, I mean, when you have a culture and the students want to be here, that's, that's what...
I mean, I think that was our focus after COVID, to rebuilding community.
Yeah. We prevailed.
I think it's really come together.
So in terms of actual accountability metrics, and committee member Richardson, you said this, like you did a good job, now what? And that's somewhat how the department views this as well. So every year, they're, they're setting a target. Typically, it's in the spring, and they'll set a target for achievement and growth, high school completion, advanced coursework, et cetera. And the points that you receive is based on how you fall compared to that target. So in this instance, it, it looks like it's somewhat of a negative in terms of English Language Arts not earning points for their targets. But that is because last year, we did much better than the state said. So last year, they're like, great job, you better do better next year. So when we saw a slight decline, the, you know, the determination from the state is that we didn't meet the target, that there was a decline, and so we didn't earn any points in that regard. The two in math is that we saw some, some gains, but still below what the state was looking for, and very similar in science. And primarily, that goes back to the data we shared with you last year, which saw similar gains that we've been seeing year over year over year. You know, again, last year's targets were based on this kind of assumption that MCAS mattered, and students were going to go into the test trying as hard as they did. So that's, you know, statewide, there was a little bit of a shift, but in terms of our change in this area, it's because we did better than expected last year as far as the Department of Ed is concerned, and then when they set that bar even higher, we just didn't get there. The flip side, you're seeing really high numbers in growth, which we also saw in that chart previously, where English is back above the state, and the math is the highest it's ever been. So we did really well in that category. Again, in our four-year cohort graduation, so that's really again collectively keeping the students here, engaged throughout. We earned all of the points there. Our engagement rate is really the minimal students that we have that need either fifth year or, you know, we can kind of re-engage if they were not coming to school or are dropouts. Again, we earned all the points that we needed to there. Our annual dropout rate Superintendent Davis said was 0.1%. there. Our annual dropout rate Superintendent said, Davis said, was point one percent, so way beyond what the state expected. The English language proficiency for, I believe, the second, if not third year in a row, we earned full points in that area as well. And that's, again, our English learner team and Kate Palladino. Chronic absenteeism, we were beyond the target that the state set, and we met the target in advanced coursework, which is junior and senior year, dual enrollment, early college, advanced placement, or project lead the way courses. So really, just a positive year overall for our entire student group. And then the other one that came back on board a couple of years ago was the lowest performing. So they look at kind of based on socioeconomic, gender, not gender, excuse me, race, ethnicity, eighth grade MCAS performance, kind of who the, the state anticipates is going to be our weakest students. And you can see that they, in most instances, earned a lot of points in those different categories. So again, a testament to, you know, everyone working hard and making sure that every student gets what they need. Our overall accountability rate and our progress towards target is set over two years. So last year's results are still coming into effect, as well as this year's results, which is making up sixty percent of our progress towards targets. So you can see we're at fifty, eight percent of meeting the targets that the state has set for us. The good news and why we included that Asian student group is that there are no classification issues. They are not in that lowest-performing student group. So we're continuing to keep a, kind of a focus on them and making sure that while we support all students, that they're seeing equitable or equal successes. And then at the end of the day, that has yielded a greater Lowell accountability percentile of sixty-fourth percentile.
Let me ask you a question about the Asian subset, because it drives me insane. Our Asian community is a heck of a lot different from the Belmont, Lexington, Wellesley, Newton, Cambridge Asian community. And we're being held to that standard, correct? So it kind of skews what our Asian subset is.
It is, it is a different student makeup than...
It just drives me insane that, like, the Asian community that we have is much, much, much different from the affluent communities.
It is, but I think, you know, again, a testament to everybody. We saw massive gains in that.
No, I agree with you. I just don't like how we're being, it's, it's, you know, compared. Because our Hispanic subset's doing wonderful. I think our Asian subset is doing wonderful also. But we're being, I just don't like how it's compared to the affluent communities. It's just a different, it's just a different standard.
Welcome to Desi.
Yeah, well, I get it. You know how I feel about Desi, so.
Let's focus on that.
So this is all the good news, right?
Bring it back to the subject matter.
This is the subject matter. Yes, it is a great job.
So this is the great news. We're consistently wanting our accountability, you know, to be above the state average. So in the highest fiftieth percentile, you can see that, you know, kind of, it was the thirty-third percentile prior to COVID. The state flatlined it because the pause in the MCAS administration in 2020, and then just kind of giving districts a little bit of flexibility to get back up to speed. But then you can see that as soon as the accountability system has come back in place, and again, this is really a testament to Superintendent Davis's vision of leadership and Assistant Superintendent Principal Barton, where really from 2022 on, we've just increased year over year over year to the highest percentile rating in this school scene. Any questions so far? All right, the last couple of slides, I know a few years ago, you asked me to show how we stand compared to other vocational schools. So similar pattern to what we've done in the past, this is a breakdown of the accountability percentile for all of the kind of wall-to-wall vocational and agricultural schools. So the average accountability for all of us collectively is fifty. So we are the yellow line in this one, but you can see that we're, we're well above and we're on the higher end of the different agriculture and vocational schools. With that, we'll drill in a little bit deeper to try to find the ones that are most like us, because we know that there is such difference in how these schools operate and their makeup. The first slide here is just looking at enrollment. So when we pulled the enrollment numbers, we had two thousand three hundred and fourteen students. So again, by far the largest vocational school in the Commonwealth. Another factor that we looked at is the percentage of low-income students. So we're on the higher end in terms of our low-income student enrollment. Our enrollment of English learners, again, we're toward the higher end of the state in terms of English learner enrollment. And narrowing it down, looking at those factors specifically, so our low-income, our English learners, did pull in some student with disability numbers, and I believe Hispanic enrollment is in here as well. These are the ten closest schools to greater Lowell Tech, and you can see that we have surpassed all of them in terms of our overall accountability for this, this past year. Any questions related to accountability, MCAS? You have all of us here. A giant team, so we can happily answer any questions.
It's just a great job done by all of us. I know, six, eight years now, we've been looking forward to getting to this point. We're there. I mean, we just keep going up and up. Math's going to be tough here to top this. So it just...
Well, I can say the teachers were already drilling into that data and already planning how to tackle every little thing to see even more success, but I do agree it...
It's going to be tough.
It will be a challenge.
It's going to be tough.
It will be a challenge.
I think we all acknowledge that.
Yeah, no, it's...
It's going to be a challenge, but I think, you know, continuing to work together, focusing on what we're focusing on, I believe it's possible.
You got the right team.
Well, it's, it's a treat when you walk in here at four thirty, five o'clock, and the mall's full of kids. So you know they want to be here.
We don't have to ask, what's your secret?
So I think the secret is collaboration, working together, student-focused, looking at data.
Correct.
And support, and supporting students to meet the expectations.
Well, the proof's in the pudding. Just look at the board.
That we want them to meet. And, and with, with all of that, it takes, it takes everybody working together, and I think that, that you have it right there. Special thank you to Mr. Barton and his leadership with his administrative team, instructional leadership.
We thank all of you.
And I just, I want to congratulate you all. You know, comparatives are something that we're trying to stay away from, generally speaking. However, I'm looking at some of these comparatives. And, you know, our scores are being compared. We're on the level of Minuteman Tech, Shawshank Tech, Essex Tech, all together different communities, Monty Tech, and, and South Shore Tech. Wow. Like, that doesn't happen overnight. And it, it's been a long time. Because generally, we sit here and say, what are you going to do better? English scores are down. You know, our EL scores are down. How do you plan on making this better? We can't ask that. We can sit there and say, how do you make it better? But ultimately, you, you've hit such a high point that we just thank you and hope, keep up the great work, because we're proud of all of you. And I speak as the whole team here. So great job to your team from our team.
I'm sure we all thank you and the entire committee for the support, because over the last couple of years, with staffing and resources, it's, you're seeing the results that have come from it.
So again, thank you, Greg, for the presentation. Thank you all for coming tonight. And just thank you to the staff, who is not here tonight, for creating a welcoming, accepting, supportive, and inclusive environment for students and making, making their learning experiences in their classrooms and in their technical programs spaces where students want to come and learn. So again, thank you all. I appreciate your time and everything that you do every day. Thank you.
Thank you, too. It's party time.
Thank you, Greg.
Funny thing is, they'll all be here tomorrow morning.
Yeah. Yeah.
No, it fell.
That's, I have one more thing on the agenda, one more thing. I apologize. The final item on my report, I'd like to ask the Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Barton, to remain to provide information regarding out-of-state travel for Mr. Haas.
Yes, so Mr. Haas, our Director of Curriculum and Strategic Assessment, who gave that excellent presentation. So he has been awarded a very prestigious fellowship to participate in the Fulbright Leaders for Global Schools Program, and he has been selected competitively by literally hundreds, if not thousands, of applicants to go to Finland from January eighteenth to February first. So he will participate in a professional development program to go to vocational schools, businesses, industry, comprehensive schools in Finland. And we all know that Finland has a wonderful vocational training program. They have a great emphasis on education and a great emphasis on technical education. So Mr. Haas is looking for a professional development days to attend this program in Finland. It is absolutely no cost to the district.
That's awesome.
And I wholeheartedly recommend him.
Food seems pretty good, too.
Motion to approve.
Congratulations, Mr. Haas, on that achievement.
Holy crap.
And have fun in Finland.
Bring us back some reindeer.
Take a lot of nice photos.
Is that a thing?
Yeah, they have reindeer there.
They want to see the scores.
Most durable.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
See.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Greg.
And that's the end of my wonderful report this evening.
Thank you, Jill.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, nice job.
Reporter, the business manager.
I just have a couple items for you tonight. There's three on the agenda, but we're going to actually scratch the last item. The first just being a short list of transfers, just moving some money around for some departments and filling in some budget gaps with some overages.
Motion to approve, hundred and four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Transfers. Second.
Mr. Getchia?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
And the second item is a motion to dispose of a paint hood and cabinet setup that was purchased by P and D in 2022. Didn't end up working out for the program the way they had hoped, so something that we don't need is just taking up a little space right now. So we're going to move it on and dispose of it either through auction or see if any of our sending schools were interested in it.
Motion to approve.
So move.
Mr. Getchia?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
And the third item, like I mentioned, I'm going to scratch, that was a solar proposal. They had talked to people about the expiring federal programs that were going on around solar energy development. We had a look at something that we could have done on kind of the back parking lot, but financially, I mean, there wasn't a whole significant benefit to the proposal that was put forward. So, you know, we'll keep, keep digging and hopefully find one eventually here that comes out on top for us. Thanks.
Thank you.
Old business, new business. Committee, person motions. Reporter, subcommittees.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, real quick, myself and some of my colleagues came to lunch today, the Thanksgiving lunch at the school, and the food was amazing. The kids did a great job. So my hat's off to everybody in the culinary program.
And the hospitality.
And the hospitality.
Tourism program. The hospitality students did a wonderful job of serving.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I save me a plate?
Of course.
Motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Getchia?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.